Cherokee Village to order, you wouldn't mind please stand and we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll recognize a short moment of silence, please.
Harrison.
Here.
Rachel Tatum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Jeff Tatum. Lo.
Here.
Ishmael.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Mayor clerk in attendance and attorney.
Everybody had a few minutes to look over tonight's agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lo to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes, thank you. Any public comments or comments from the council on agenda items?
Mayor, I just want to thank Penny and the front office staff for getting the working meetings posted publicly. I wasn't able to be here on Monday and I was able to watch that with no problems at all, take my 10 pages of notes and be prepared for tonight's meeting, so, and it's great transparency for the public, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, did a good job, I agree, I'm glad we got them posted. Had a minute, had just a minute to look over the October 16th minutes and entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve them as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve October 16th, 2025 minutes as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs. Motion passes, thank you. Let me see, correspondence, have you had any correspondence come in? No. Had a little bit to look over the financial report. We had a little bit of, I'm hoping with the property taxes, maybe we'll start picking up on the, that part's a little bit flat, but we're, so far, we're still trying to trending on point to what we was expecting for revenue on the sales tax and the street Ms. Heather, you ready for your budget update?
Uh, yeah, we discussed, we had a good, good meeting Monday night at the working meeting, um, we, uh, sent emails out to all city council on the starting of that budget, the numbers are still in flux right now, we're still honing in on some, um, numbers, um, and what I wanted to tell the council in person was that, uh, so right now in the Budget Committee is me, the mayor, and Misty from our office administrator, and, uh, we discussed our goal as a Budget Committee for 2026, to try to come in with a balanced budget best we can, our revenue matching our expenses. To do that, um, at the very least, to do that, we can't put any big ticket items into the budget, for example, I mean, uh, take building and grounds, for example, they're expecting an HVAC to go out, they would want 12,000 for that, we're not going to put that in the budget, so that when that happens in the year, we're coming to council for those one-off, big-ticket items. If police wants a new truck for $70,000, it comes up at that moment, we discuss it. So the, those big-ticket items are going to stay out of the budget, so that we can hone in on truly what our budget is, and when we need to go over our budget or grab money from reserves, it's one-off at times, it's in our faces, council, the public knows about it, we know that we're having to pull money from somewhere else to get that money, so that's our goal, and, um, we are trimming the fat best we can, and, um, you know, if anybody's got any questions, you know, they can email me or whatever, come, you know, come to one of our meetings, but, um, you know, for the most part, there's a few departments that need to increase by one full-time person, so that's, you know, how salaries due to a budget. Um, we've decreased, uh, line items on quite a few departments, um, the salaries, though, adding a position and/or just your general 3% raise, you know, kicks that out of the equation. And the other big kicker that we're wrapping our heads around right now is, um, in the past, in the past couple of years, we've had really good increase on revenue, uh, but at a minimum of 3%, if not higher, for the following year, and that's not where we're trending right now for sales tax revenue and all the revenues that we make. So, um, for 2026, uh, right now, we are predicting that we're not making as much, and so we're trying to hone in on what we need to spend, and we, and there's some big ticket items us as council is going to have to decide on who gets what, um, so, I mean, unless we go into fine detail, which we did Monday night, um, you know, like I said, we have questions, but we're still working on it, and our goal for December is to have a presented budget to y'all, um, that we may or may not be ready to vote on, but it'll be really close for December, so, if y'all have any questions, y'all can ask me, because I got all the information right here.
Now, one thing, one thing we've done this year is just did a comprehensive, just dive in at comprehensive line by line, just to go through it and say, you know, you know, what's this, and you know, give an explanation of why it's needed, what it needed for, you know, we've combined a lot of, you know, combined some stuff to help streamline it, and, and as a general rule, I mean, you know, barring the big ticket, like Ms. Heather was saying, the, you know, I mean, you get into labor and insurance and property insurance, health insurance, and utilities that, I mean, you don't have a, you know, the biggest influence in as a whole, and we've actually reduced a lot, and we've reduced the budget some, hadn't we, Heather?
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know whose decision it's going to be, you know, there's, like, like, like we discussed, um, at some point, somebody's got to answer the question as, you know, or let me, let me, let me say this, I don't really know anyone's opinion on what are we good with, if, if we needed to have a deficit budget, like, what number are we good with? Do we want to come in with balance zero to zero? Or are we good with, uh, a $50,000 deficit? Are we okay with a $200,000 deficit? Because depending on our goal, several departments aren't going to get their wish list, and so, um, we can keep hashing that out in November and have a big crunch time in December to discuss that, but, um, you know, several departments want to add an employee, and, you know, somebody's got to say yea or nay to that, and it's either going to go in the budget or not go in the budget, so, um, I mean, rough numbers right now, rough, rough numbers right now, we're, you know, 200,000 over, so somebody's not getting their wish list.
And the 200,000 over is not including the big ticket items, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, no, it's none of the...
Yeah, I mean, so that's no, that's no, um...
I mean, basically...
Major vehicle repairs or HVACs or...
Yeah, we're not budgeting for capital improvements, is what I mean, it would be capital improvements, you know, you do planned purchases to replace stuff, capital improvements, we're just saying that if something was to happen, it would be a, you know, we come back to a meeting, discuss it and vote on it, you know, which, I mean...
And, and I'm just saying that no decisions get made tonight or input gets put in, we, we, we have to, we have to, we have to get it all done. I mean, the, the, the cool thing about, you know, Monday night being so important is, you know, that, those could be decisions that we already decided on, and then the Budget Committee can keep rolling forward, so, I'm kind of giving y'all the information and, um, you know...
Yeah, it's just...
See what y'all's opinion is, or...
I know one question I had, and I went back and I watched it several times, and there were several people speaking at once, that's probably why you couldn't make out exactly what was said, but when you're talking about the front office and having, I think, one become from part-time to full-time, I couldn't make out, were you talking about, because Scholar is part-time, correct? Were you talking about his position becoming full-time or treasurer position?
Treasurer.
Okay.
Treasurer.
What was the reasoning for the treasurer position being considered full-time?
Uh, according to, and, and Misty would probably better answer that, but I mean, I think it all boils down to the treasurer's position is like part-time, part-time, and like, Misty gets thrown at, at that desk by herself a lot, and when she's not there, you know, it's not, I mean, Mayor, you probably have, you probably have a better answer, but I mean, it's...
Yeah, right, I mean, right now, we have one full-time person, which is Ms. Misty, and then two part-time people, and the, the goal is to take the two part-time positions and have one full-time position, so we actually have, you know, you have two full-time people working in the office, you know, in receiving and, and, you know, receiving and check, check issuing, uh, which, I mean, not just saying they're going to be setting, issuing checks all the time, because we're, I mean, we do a little bit of everything from, you know, carry out the trash, to sweep the floors, to answer the phones, I mean, but Misty's deal is the full-time administrative, she, we don't have no backup, except a couple of part-times, and it, it has had always up until, uh, well, up until right after I took office, it had been a full-time position.
Yeah.
And it, it was cut to a part-time position because, uh, Ms. Deb that took it was retired and, and she had asked for it to be part-time.
So you're, you're saying get rid of one part-time position?
It'd be combining the two part-times to one full-time, yes.
Okay, so one person would be gone. Okay.
Just a part, yeah, and probably if it would, it would be a part-time as needed, not guaranteed, just a part-time as needed, in case we, you just had to have somebody come in and cover to answer the phone like we've had in the past, I know Ms., Ms. Betty had done that in the past...
Yeah.
In the years past, just somebody that can come in to answer the phone, help out as needed, just to, if both of them have to be gone at the same time, but that, that's the, that's the goal for that, is to try to get, I mean, just to get two full-time people back in the front office.
I have a question on it, but it's not a question I can ask in public, because it would need to go into executive session, because it's directly tied to personnel by name, so, I guess I can maybe get with you on that privately?
Just give me a call, my office is, I'm always around.
Okay.
Is that something that would, I'm sorry, the question I have, Ms. Roland, would your question, personnel question, would that impact the budget discussion and how Heather moves forward, you know, with the budget?
Yeah, I think it might, that's why I'm concerned.
If that's the case, then are you calling for an executive session this evening?
I hate to do that timewise on us, but I, I almost think we would need to, to get that answered, because I don't want to tie up budget any more than they are, so if we could go on a very quick, quick one, and again, the reason why you can't, you know, ask it in public, it's because it, it's tied directly to personnel and that, that is private information to protect employees, so, it's nothing nefarious at all.
Any other questions on the budget?
If you want to move into executive session, you need...
I motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
You have to have a motion.
He just motioned.
Right, he motioned, Jason.
I make a motion that we are, have our executive session.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Lo, seconded by Mr. Martin to, to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Personnel, yeah, concerning budget.
All, roll call vote.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Lo.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Motion passed.
So we going now?
I will keep this very brief, I promise.
All right, we'll be back shortly. All righty, we're back in session and no action taken at this time. All righty, before, quick, before we move on, budget, budget questions, we will get another budget, I know the holiday's coming up next week, so I'll have to look at the calendar, but what do you think?
Um, I would say, oh, well, on...
The Tuesday following the holiday?
Uh, yeah, Tuesday or Wednesday following the holiday.
We'll, we'll get it posted on the, we'll get it posted, I have to get, make sure, but, no, the holidays next week will lay off, but it'd be the, either Tuesday or Wednesday after the holiday, and we'll get it posted in time. Uh, into the mayor's report, uh, I did, well, Ms. Pam, if you got to watch the deal, I, that I'd talked to Mr. Steinle, or Trey Steinle, our representative, state representative, and he had explained, he actually sent us an email too, didn't he, Ms. Penny? But he, he would explain to me that the ADEQ, Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, has waived all restrictions on the property, the hospital property, the old, the abandoned hospital property. And the land commission at this time is working on, uh, working on what rules and regulations and how to get it back up to bid on the land commissioner's website, so hopefully he said by mid next year it should be, it should be for sale in the commissioner lands office, so. So I'm, I'm pretty happy and stoked about that, I hope it gets, keeps falling through, we've been, we've been kinda putting pressure on him and asking questions and sending emails, try to get something done with it, so. And everybody's seen, the highway, the highway is open. Instruction crew is moving along pretty good, they're gonna be working on the sides of the road, he told me probably end of March before they'll really, they'll get completed with all the side work, so. And City Hall wants to be closed Thursday and Friday next week for the, the Thanksgiving holidays. And two o'clock Wednesday, yeah, all righty. All righty. Departmental reports. Department heads, animal control, let's get to see Ms. Megan, you out doing good.
I was not scared of them when they were rushing me, do you mind having questions about my money?
If you wouldn't, I'll let you, if you wanna come to the next budget meeting, I'll let you know when it is and we'll get you here. We'll, we'll put it out there and send it out. We'll get you here for sure. Fire department, anything to add there, chief?
Uh, brother, maybe definitely today. Nothing else?
All righty, yeah, you, yeah, you get the last on the agenda, so you'll be, place chief, anything there, okay? All righty. Moving on into the old business. We're gonna, the landscaping bid uh, that we tabled from October, we decided to, uh, because of budget constraints, reject bids. Charlie, Charlie has, Charlie come to the meeting, he's agreed, he's gonna do, he'll do the landscaping for 2026, so. So we can get that tuck off our agenda. Old business number two is the planning and zoning commission vacancy. Mr. Lynn Phelps is here, Eddie Ishmael and Peter Martin, we're looking to fill. Uh, we got two vacancies at this time. Somebody said we might have to, are we gonna have another one at the first of the year, or is it just, it's two at this time, isn't it, Tom? Yeah. The plan is we can fill, I was gonna fill one, we can fill one or both tonight, the original plan was we could fill one of them tonight, we put it out on the website for resumes and we could fill the next one, we could fill the second position in December. So, Mr. Lynn, if you wanna come up here and tell, tell them who you are and your address and your interest in serving on the planning and zoning commission.
Most of y'all don't know me, I've lived here my whole life. I grew up in Cherokee Village, my name is Lynn Phelps. I live at 222 East Lake Shore Drive. I ran a business for thirty-eight years, a trucking business of my own, I retired and now I feel like I need to get involved in the community some. I've got too much free time. So, I need something to do. And if anybody has any questions, I was eight years in the Air Force, I worked in the JAG, JAG office, I worked for Judge African Tenor, I interpreted regulations and rules, is all I did. So, if you have any questions, I think I'm more than qualified for the job.
All righty, Mr. Eddie?
Do I need to go up there?
If you want to. You can, you can sit down, Mr. Lynn.
I am on city council, my name's Eddie Ishmael, I live at nine Yosemite. I've been in construction since I was thirteen. Now I have my own construction company and then I'm a licensed real estate broker in Arkansas. So my main objective with getting into planning and zoning was to look at the ordinances that are brought to us and brought to city council and that planning and zoning works at to try not to restrict as much as we have to, with buildings, make sure we're doing things that make sense and not overstepping as a city government, so.
Mr. Payne?
My turn?
You.
My name's Peter Martin, I'm at seventeen Geronimo. I've been on city council for at least ten plus years. I'm familiar with planning and zoning, my background is, my family's been in government, uh, my father started in sixty-three, ended in ninety-seven. My brother was mayor on the city council and that's what my family usually talks about is government. Uh, I've noticed planning and zoning has not been doing what the state statute says it's supposed to do or our laws, so I wanna get into planning and zoning and, and help direct them to do what they're supposed to be doing. That's it.
So we need to do a voice vote on the.
I will say real quick, cause you, you said about we can do one or two tonight, if we wanna do one, we would post it, the city did post it for a position two days ago, so do y'all just wanna do one tonight and then?
The other one in December. Yeah, the original plan at the working meeting is we do, get one tonight and then do the other one in December meeting.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where I'm at with it, so I wanna appoint one tonight and do the next one in the December meeting. Any questions or anything from the council for candidates?
I may regret this, but I do have a question for Peter quickly. Uh, you said that our planning and zoning is not.
Is not doing what a planning and zoning department should be doing.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Read, read the ordinance on planning and zoning and then read the state statutes. They are not planning and zoning, they are trying to run a department. That's not what they're supposed to be doing. They haven't looked at the original plan for the city that was finished in twenty-ten. They haven't done anything with that at all. We have a lot of long-term things that I think should be brought in front of planning and zoning, one would be sewers. We had a mayor that brought that up at one time and tried to rush it through, but I think we can have a sixty-year plan, but it has to be started at some time. And you have to have people able to understand that we can't just worry about that particular moment in time that we're in, we have to start looking down the road. And I've advocated this over most of my years in office and it has never been done. So, I kinda stirred the pot with all this because nobody was wanting to be on planning and zoning until I decided I wanted to be on planning and zoning, so. I would like to see us start planning. And the zoning is, they've, they've been doing that okay, but there has been no long-term plans, no plans that have been done by that department since twenty-ten when they did the original documents and everything was basically single-family residential and that was about it.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Did it by vote, uh, voice vote?
I think you have to.
You have to appoint and then you ask them for a vote.
Oh.
So you can choose who you want to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So if you choose Mr. Phelps and, um.
Well.
I feel like I would have to abstain.
Yeah, 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 whoever the council member is. My original intent when I brought this up was to get one council member, a council member involved so they can be a liaison back to the council in planning and zoning, you know, vice versa, from the council to planning and zoning thing, stuff.
And they, and I think you can ask the, the city council members for recommendations and they can talk to you about it. Also, I think me and Peter Martin should abstain from. The recommendations.
Yeah, yeah. Wow, that's a little sticky widget today, isn't it? Well. My recommendation would probably be Mr. Eddie if you'd be willing.
If they wanna vote for me, that's fine.
Ms. Clerk? Do a voice vote on the, to appoint Mr. Eddie Ishmael to the planning and zoning commission?
Thompson?
Yes.
Martin, whoops.
Yeah, I can vote cause it's not me, yes.
Low?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now, Mr. Phelps, you can keep your, he can keep his resume on file for the next position that we're gonna be filling for December.
My understanding was I was supposed to be putting in the night, I mean, at least it would decide the day or the night, which I'm not really for. I don't think being on the council, you should be on the planning board. That's overlapped too much, that takes some of our responsibility away. So I don't approve of that at all, so I don't wish it all. And I don't wanna be on the planning board, but I have to work with the council. Our, the planning board's supposed to make recommendations to the mayor and the council, council shouldn't be on the planning board. So y'all do what you want to, that's not the way, that's not the way it's set up to work.
But if you look at the history, there's, there's, in the past, there's always been a council member on and and the law also states that one out of, or two-fifths can be on there. Right, correct.
You.
But I was understanding, I was supposed to be on the night, the reason I come down here, cause I was told to. So if y'all wanna do that, well, I was wrong.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, Mr. Lynn, what we also discussed was having a council on there to create a liaison relationship to get information back to council better than what it's done in the past, because I think it'd be a disservice not having you on there.
If I had a chance and you put a couple more people on there, it would make it easier to do it. You may be, you had people that tend to do it, cause you can do three showers now, three or four. That's the reason I don't feel the board. But if you're gonna do it this way, I was told, I don't wanna be on the board. If I was told completely different, y'all change the rules when you get down here. I don't think you should have them on the board.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Phelps a question? May I ask Mr. Phelps a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Phelps, if the council had appointed you this evening and, and you were satisfied with that, but then for the second position that needs to be appointed, after. Bear with me just a moment, I just wanna pose a question to you. Had you been appointed this evening to be on planning and zoning? And then in the December meeting, we evaluated anyone else that put forward and we decided to go ahead and then put Mr. Ishmael on the planning and zoning commission, would, would you, would you have left, uh, would you have resigned from the planning and zoning commission? And I understand, I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the difference of you being appointed this evening versus next month.
That's fine, I don't feel that it's appropriate. But, if I'm on the board and you signed it, I can't do nothing but, but I would roll down here and still would come down here and speak of the mayor. But I would just get up there and I didn't know nothing about the other two. I knew Peter wanted to be on the board, I didn't know nothing about this. But, I still don't think it's appropriate to have two of them on the board for sure.
No, there's not gonna be two council members on the board, no.
Well, he's already.
Yeah, he's, he's not. Yeah, he's not. As I said before, sticky widget, people won't be happy.
I don't see why you can't put two on the night.
Well, we did, we did post on the city website, asking for people that are interested to, you know, to let us know and put, put the name in the hat. Uh, we definitely wanted to encourage for the very point you had, um, citizen involvement with this, with this position and in this department, so that was the, that was the thought process behind making the post.
But, so his, this post has been open for over four months because back in, no. What was it, September, mayor comes up to me, you wanna be on planning and zoning, I said, yes, sure. And then I came back twice after that and said, are you gonna give me the position or not? So then he comes up and then Eddie Ishmael said, yeah, I'd like to be on it, only here at last meeting. Okay? So, I have no problem with one, one alderman being on that so that there's the back and forth. But if, if you appointed that gentleman or talked to him about being appointed, then you should, sorry, you should go through with what you decided you wanted to do. You're the mayor, I'm not, that's, that's your bailiwick, appointments are you.
I, I agree with what Peter just said, yeah.
I don't, I, I was trying to find the right words, I definitely don't like the way this looks, mayor, that you're being kinda thrown under the bus, but at the same time, if that conversation happened.
It happened in the past, I did, I haven't talked to Mr. Lynn in probably, what, three weeks, four weeks? Who won?
Two weeks, two, three weeks ago, the ball game.
Yeah, it was the home ball game.
Well, in fairness, it, it kinda.
And I didn't, I don't remember promising anything, I said, you can come down and the council has to vote on it.
I mean.
The appointment's at large.
Right, but I also know too, like the word, the word promise, that, that may not have been the word used either way, but insinuate or if the perception was, you know, perception is not.
My, my deal also is, is I wanna make sure the planning and zoning commission works cohesive and works and follows the rule, Robert's rules and orders for meetings, because my understanding, the last meeting was a shamble. I got letters from Mr. Paul Hinch stating as much as, that the last meeting was pretty much a wasn't, didn't go very well, so whomever gets on it.
Paul Hinch likes to complain.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. But I just said, I want.
I've got a couple letters from him already.
Peter.
Yes, sir.
But I just wanna make sure that whomever gets on the board can work cohesively together with each other.
I completely agree.
And Mr. Lynn wants on it, voice vote for Mr. Lynn Phelps.
Mayor, can I say something?
Voice vote for Mr. Lynn Phelps.
Okay. Martin?
Yes.
Low?
Yes, thank you.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes, thank you.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I appreciate you coming tonight, I was wanting to meet you and, cause I've seen your name on the agenda twice, so thank you for coming and I hope you get to spend all kinds of time working on planning and zoning. And, and the thing is, to, to back up with what Peter says, I mean, it's in addition to planning and zoning, any of us working on a master plan for this city, I mean, that's just the vision of whatever, so that's just an ongoing problem that we all need to be tackling anyway. Not just, not just planning and zoning.
Yes, and thank you, thank you for your, your poise and your professionalism with the way you voiced your concerns and, um, for all intents and purposes challenged us, I really appreciate that, sincerely, I do.
Old business number three is the asphalt zipper, it's been tabled since October. At the working meeting, we discussed, discussed it about it. It's a good piece of equipment that has its purpose, but I don't know if we're ready for it yet, we need some other things to go along with the, it needs some other things to go along with it before we actually invest quarter million dollars into a piece of equipment, we need to get some other things, so. Uh, I would like to probably revisit this sometime next year after we do some building up into the street department with some more equipment and personnel. So we can get that off the agenda.
Before you move on for that, I did have one question that I picked up from the meeting, it was a burner for the oil tank, was that for the zipper or not for the zipper?
No, it's for the, the oil tank, the, our oil storage tank at the city shop. Uh, one of the reasons I haven't done any chip and seal in a few years is because the burner's been out and we've been trying to find a replacement burner for it, I mean, I don't know pretty much, that thing looked like it was on a World War II battleship, it's so old, so. Trying to find something a little newer that actually works and that's when, we don't have no way to store the oil to do chip and seal, like when Joey, the street department guys, do the cold mix, I mean, he has to make sure, I mean, it's like, it's like looking at a crystal ball, we gotta make sure the weather's right and the moisture's right, the time's right and the guy, the guy with the truck shows up at, you know, six-thirty in the morning so we can run, run the whole batch of oil in one load. because we don't have no way to store it once it cools off. So hopefully we can get the burner fixed and looking for a new tractor, new or used, or new to us tractor, at least one, if not two, and probably need to be looking for a new front end loader. I actually got a phone call from Mr. Tony at the Cox Implement Place today, and he's working up some numbers on a couple of new tractors to get a, price on what they would be. And I'll present them next month.
And a dump truck, mayor?
Yeah, and a dump truck. Because we got, you know, and we got, like I said, we need to do some rebuilding first. I mean, I'm not saying the asphalt zipper's not a good piece of equipment. Very much appreciate Mr. Brent for bringing it to our attention, but we, we got to, we gotta get some, we gotta get some pieces of equipment, we gotta get some stuff.
To push it.
Yeah, yeah, in line before it'll be any use to us. Number four, the, Ms. Clerk, Ms. Penny, I don't know how is, are we in the, is the ordinance for the election terms for the city clerk?
It's in the process between the FOIAs and everything, that's been the last on my list, but I'll have it for you for December.
Yeah. And then, number five, the street department, which is the tractor, we talked about that, we're gonna try to get some prices on some tractors. Number six, the waste.
Hey, on those tractors, is he trying to get you used tractors, or?
Yeah, he's giving us posters on, uh, used tractors and the used dump trucks.
Yeah, used. Uh, Mr. Tony had called, and he was gonna get us on a couple of new ones, but we'd been looking for some, you know, five, eight hundred hours or less. Something, something in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range, fifty to seventy-five.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask is they, um, I know their Massey Ferguson line has their own bank, and there are times that they offer zero percent financing almost. And so that would be something that could be a benefit to look into.
And, and yeah, and Mr. Tony, when I was talking to Mr. Tony at Cox Implement, they do Massey first contractors, and he can sell up to a seventy-five horse tractor that doesn't have def or burn offs, so, and their, and their manual, no electronics, don't have to worry about the electronics messing up. Uh, on the waste connections contract, new, or old business number six, they actually sent a, uh, updated addendum to the contract. Let me get switched over here to it, but he says, the updated addendum will be, uh, they'll be able to provide the original twelve that they've been providing, plus four more, so a total of sixteen roll-offs. Any solid waste, construction or demolition waste that's brought to the landfill in a city-owned, a city vehicle, a city, it's marked city vehicle, will get a discounted rate of sixty-four fifty a ton. Said they'll also provide roll-off containers to remove the solid waste and demolitions from when we do raising removals at the discounted rate. And they actually, uh, uh, in here, he, he doesn't have it in here yet, but they do have a sign up where they're charging, uh, they're charging a surcharge if you don't have the load tarp when they come in. And he, uh, they bought a road sweeper, they brought a road sweeper attachment to keep 289 cleared. So, I mean, they, I mean, he pretty much, Mr. Shawnee, you know, pretty much give with all of her, all of her ask.
Um, I, Monday night, I didn't hear anything about, to make sure the citizens of Cherokee Village are getting a discount through their trash bill, and also, I want to absolutely make sure, because it needs to match our ordinance, and that's that if they are going to do an increase, they have to come before this council.
Yeah, he's, I thought that was in here, maybe it was in the email, I thought it was in here, he said we're, I'd hate to say, it was either sixty or, I think it was sixty days, he said they would give a sixty-day notice for CPI. So, yeah, it was in the email. But, oh.
So it is in the contract that the citizens continue to get a discount?
I didn't see that in there, no.
Okay.
I mean, there'll be, and the question also is, is it, this is the, whether we want to use the, written, you know, use the con, or use the contract, or the agreement that they've already, that's been in use, or whether we want them to redo a whole new contract. You know, they got the contract with the addendums, but whether we want to do a whole new contract.
Yeah.
And.
My concern is that our ordinance says that they cannot raise the rates without coming before council, and it also says that the citizens get a special discount.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure those things are in the contract that we sign with them, so that we're in compliance with our ordinance.
Okay.
And I definitely don't want our citizens to lose that discount, because we, we, they have always gotten a discount.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll ask him about that, because I didn't see anything, like I said, that's, I didn't see anything in the contract that said about that, but anyway, yeah, and it does say in the contract, a sixty-day service presider will provide the city a sixty-day written notice before any, any such increase. Talking about the CP, CPI increase.
And we used to require them to have the small trucks, now they're going to the big trucks. And that was in the old.
Yeah, that, that's gonna have to be changed in our ordinance.
Yeah. Oh, it's in, I didn't read that in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's in there as well, yeah.
Okay. Well. So do we, we want to move forward with the, the contracting with them, or what do we, I mean, do we, I don't know of any other trash company that can do Cherokee.
Well, I talked to a few, and they would do it. With the only way they could beat them on price is if we had some way to collect the payments. So like, if, you know, like how hard he ties it into the water bill and things like that. But since we don't own any of our
Yeah, we don't want, we don't, we don't want to know where to collect the money.
They said the collecting of the money would be an issue and time-consuming for them.
And mayor, this, uh, this contract, it's a year, yearly contract, it comes up for a new every year, or?
Hmm.
I bet it's probably multi-year.
No, it is a multi-year, but I, I was thinking he said two years. Or, I can't, no. So determined agreement is for five years, and it can be extended two times.
Um, is there, is there any thought or concern that we could be getting a better deal? Or is this just basically a formality, because they're the ones that are able to, to do what we need them to do?
I mean, the other companies I talked to said they would be about the same price as Waste Connections, but they said they could beat them on price if we collected. Now, I don't know what that would entail for us to, to collect that in-house and send them a check.
Yeah, I wouldn't know.
But that was suggested before, and the water company was not willing to do that.
Yeah, they had to do an order.
Would there be any benefit to, um, just asking for an amendment for a shorter, a shorter contracted period so that we can do a little bit more research, or is that overkill? I truly am asking, just for my own identification.
I mean, I don't care to ask, I can, I'll ask for anything.
Does, any other council member have any thoughts on that? Is that worth the squeeze?
I think it's worth looking into, um, and I don't know if they'd be willing to do a yearly or a two-year contract. But I would be more for that than five years, uh, just because of everything that's so much up in the air right now. But again, I go back to my other concern, I want to, I don't want for the, the specifically named discount that the citizens of Cherokee Village gets to not be in that contract, and then after we sign, they come back and say, oh, well, you know, yeah, we're, we're giving y'all a better deal, but no, we're not, you know, there's nothing in here that says what, what discount you're gonna get. So, that and.
But, oh, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Shawnee, he's, he's very responsive to emails.
Oh, yeah, extremely, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care to ask him.
I agree with Councilman Roland, if we could do, if we could ask for a two-year, um, as a compromise with the five that they're, they're presenting, that would be, and then us do research into what other companies can compete, not just in price, but as we know, in, in service, guaranteed service, reliability, dependability, um, all of those things. Because, you know, that's, that's just as important as price, in my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get him an email sent to him.
You also need to have him monetize the sixteen roll-offs and the accommodations that they're doing on raising removal, because previous discussions when, uh, under the previous administration on the trash hauling contract, it became, part of that discussion was the fact that Cherokee is unique in the number of roll-offs included in the contract, that we are getting far met, far more roll-offs than any other community, you know, under contract. So you have to stop and look at, what is the cost for each roll-off? Because I think that number is somewhere between six and eight hundred.
Usually in the six hundred, yeah, usually at least six hundred.
There's a lot of moving parts, it's not just the rate, it's not just the timeframe, it's how all that pulls together, but from what I'm hearing, what you're saying is, is that they give a sixty-day notice on an adjustment for, based on the CPI, Consumer Price Index, if that's, if that's a reference that they're making. Then it doesn't really matter whether you have a two-year contract or a five-year contract. If they're gonna come in every time there's an adjustment in the CPI, the term of the contract is immaterial. Because they're gonna give the city sixty days' notice that they're gonna apply a CPI adjustment. Whether you're under a two or five-year contract, this really doesn't matter.
And if you guys would rather change our ordinance to fit the contract, that's fine, but they do not match. That's, that's been my problem for two years now. But going back on the roll-offs, if you'll remember, the reason why we renegotiated that is because this council came up with a totally different trash ordinance. That were, you know, we completely redid all that. That was our bargaining chip. We were giving them more customers, so in exchange, we want more roll-offs.
And I understand, I understand that. And I'm just saying, I don't want to, in the co, in the conversation with them, I don't want to miss one of the concerns that you've pointed out, as well as Mr. Lo, that there are multiple concerns within the overall contract.
Right.
I want, I want to make sure we hit on all the points.
Agreed.
That we can, and if there is some point that we cannot agree to, then I agree with you, we need to go back and change the ordinance.
Yes, agreed.
It needs a match. Oh, uh. Let me get my notes wrote.
Thank you for having that conversation, mayor, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And, uh, so anyway, I'll get back with him about the updated amendments and the contract, I'll get him an email sent, uh. Number seven is the fire station update. Myself and Ms. Penny has been making efforts to make contact with the title company. And, uh, and as of today, I, I haven't got a returned phone call or an email. Have, have you, Ms. Penny?
Why, no, I have not returned that. While you guys were in executive session, I talked to Jody and John, and just asked them if maybe they could contact them and find out where our paperwork is at. Because we're not getting return calls, and emails, anything.
Yeah, you, thank you, you read my mind, that was gonna be what I, what I asked. Just a, kind of a personal statement on this, um, this is long overdue. Um, I'm in real estate, and I know that title work does not take this long. I know there were, you know, there's, it, with commercial property, it's a little bit different. But we are paying insurance on this building, because it was, when we were renewing, it was the best time to add it. The citizens need to know that we're paying for insurance on a building that's not ours.
Yes.
And we need, many hands make for light work, we need to, we need to push this through. Whatever anyone can do to make this happen, it needs to be done.
I made sure municipal league knew that we still do not own these buildings. And they, they're okay with it, they know what's going on, so we've done that. And in my emails, I was promised the paperwork the fourteenth of last month. Because once I get that paperwork, it's got to go to SID so that they can have their attorneys review it, and then come back and sign it. And then it's gotta come back to me to make sure it's okay, that I can get it to you to sign, and then we can file it. So you're talking forty-five to sixty days.
Even if we got it tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah.
And in the, in the time of the change, um, we have to change the contracts and the names, because some of the names are changing.
Yes.
So I have been emailing or calling just about every other day, and I'm not getting any answer.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I've even drove out there, and I still hadn't been able to get a returned phone call or an email. Oh, uh, so anyway, new business, moving on into new business, new business number one, uh, is a request of mine to be put on there, and so back at the, uh, back at the end of last year, the White River Planning, Planning and Development down at Batesville, they have the recycling grants. You can, you can apply for grant money to recycle, and it's just to fill out a piece of paper, you email it in, they, they, they issue, there's a certain amount of grant money for this district, and if you fill out a paper and you're eligible, you get grant money. We, we had, you know, I've, we, we received, I asked for sixteen thousand dollars, they gave us a twelve thousand dollar recycling grant. It's a, it's a reimbursement grant, you know, you write the check, you pay for it, give them, Ms. Sanders down at White River, uh, Planning and Development, uh, the invoice, they, they reimburse us, well, the, you know, and Cherokee Village is a member of the Tri-County Recycling, Tri-County Recycle Board. We, along with the, all the other cities, you got, you got Isard, Isard, Fulton, Sharp County, and the cities in Sharp County, and them cities are members of it, well, they needed, uh, part of the grant money that was applied for was purchase vehicle, and purchase vehicle for the recycling center. Well, they, uh, they purchased, purchased the new-to-them-used box van, and a part of our obligation to them is to pay for part of the box van. The box van was, our part of the obligation is forty-three hundred, thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. It's, that's kinda how it's split on the cost, but wanna, also, wanna, I wanted to ask the council if we could take our twelve thousand in a transfer or gift, or however you want to say it, I don't know what the legal word would be to say, but transfer part of our grant money, six thousand dollars of our grant money to the Tri-County Recycle Board, because they, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five grant, so if we transfer six thousand dollars, it'll get them forty-five hundred. So that's, when I, we, we give them a check, they're gonna give us the twenty-five percent back, so it's kinda, kind of a weird deal how grant works. But anyway, we're gonna get our money back, we'll get our six thousand back when we turn the invoice in. But, uh, I was gonna ask the council, uh, to vote, we'll have to do a voice vote, but to, to vote if it would be okay to, to split our grant so we can keep them operating with a newer vehicle, and they're kinda struggling out there right now, uh. Kinda struggling out there right now with monies coming in, the prices of cardboard and everything's down, and of course, as we know, doing budgets, everything else is up, so they're kinda struggling, you know, we're required by the state to have a recycling program. And we're fortunate, we're the only one in the state that has a multi-county board that takes care of it, and, uh, I would, I would be, you know, I would be taken aback to even know what it would cost to run our own recycling center. Go ahead, Ms. Penny.
Uh, would, would that have to be a resolution instead of just a voice vote? We, it should be on paper.
Yeah, a resolution would be the way to go.
Yeah, can we vote on it and then write up the resolution after the vote?
The council can just vote if they want to.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, when I asked Ms. Sanders, she said it just had to be in an open council meeting and voted, you know, an open public council meeting, and voted on because, you know, for auditing purposes.
Right, long as it's voted, it's, it's a discretion of the council.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, second to Ms. Roland to, uh, to use six thousand dollars of our uh, White River Planning Development recycling grant money to Tri-County Recycling Board. Voice vote, please.
And that is in two parts, right? One is for the purchase, to go towards the purchase of the vehicle, and then the second is like what we finish out owing.
Yeah, it'll be our, yeah, it'd be, uh, to finish out our obligation for the year. You know, our, our obligation that we pay them.
I didn't know if that needed to be in there to show that it's too separate.
Vehicle purchase and operation and maintenance. Voice vote, please.
Lo.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Rachel Tatum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All righty, Mr. Fire Chief, new business number two is the fire department vehicle purchase. Yes, well, I mean, it's got a, it's either got a sixty or ninety-day lead-out, so. The new, the fire chief.
Evening, y'all.
Evening, y'all. So looking at purchasing a new truck, administrative truck. And I wanted to bring it up this evening because depending on what y'all may decide, it would affect my budget for next year. Because currently, I've got budgeted an expenditure both ways, depending on what you decide. So it'll actually shrink my budget, some, my proposed budget, based off that. So next year, I've got three firemen going to the fire academy. Currently, I don't have a vehicle for them to drive down there. We pay them mileage. It's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-mile trip to the academy. Ten weeks, they drive home on the weekends. That totals right around, I did the math, twelve thousand dollars for next year budgeted. My thoughts were, and that, again, rest on y'all's shoulders on how you want to pay for it, but financing a vehicle for five years would be almost equivalent as far as an annual payment on a vehicle for us to have. My thoughts were it would make more sense to be putting the money towards a vehicle that I don't know how many more years I'll get out of this one, driving it daily. I'd like to retain that one for them to drive to the academy, but replace the one that I drive daily. Got some quotes on vehicles. Got some interest rate from banks. But again, that depends on y'all as far as if you wanted to lump sum, pay for a vehicle or pay it out. I've got all the info to answer questions either way, whatever y'all's thoughts are on that.
Well, so on, in the working meeting, you were going to get some, get some interest rate quotes.
Yes, and I've got those.
I would love to know what those, what that looks like.
Um, one bank quoted as five percent, another one, six and a half. Both of them, document fees were just two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. So, based off the dollar amount. And I don't have a complete total yet as far as like equipping the truck. Equipment for my truck doesn't run as much as like what the PD has to put in there.
Sure.
I don't have as extensive equipment. I do have it on the base truck. It totaled, I showed the mayor today, like forty-eight thousand on the truck. That's state purchasing price, so.
And like we talked about Monday at the working meeting, there's, myself and Misty had been talking. We were about to the point that I was going to transfer, have her transfer fifty thousand into the savings because getting toward the end of the year. And then we got Ms. Cal come talking about that, and I'm like, well, I'm going, he's going to transfer it into savings. So I mean, we could either, and the truck's forty, forty-eight, two thirty-eight. So I mean, we could use the money to pay for the, either way, either way the council decides. We can use the money, instead of transferring the savings, we can use the money to pay for the truck, or we can pay it in a payment. I mean, one thing with the fire department is, the truck he's driving now is a two thousand nine model, so it's, it's not like a, it's not like it's going to go anywhere in five years. I mean, it's going to be around.
Right. We'll, we'll operate at a solid fifteen years. You know, it's not something that's going to have to be replaced that.
Chief, could you tell the council, like, in over the past three years, about how many candidates you have to, you've had to send to the academy?
Right. So this last year, we sent two. So I mean, that would have been another if we'd already had it. Year before that, I sent at least one, maybe two. One, I know, the previous year, so.
And with the, with the city truck, we'd just be out to, I mean, it'd just be out the gas. We wouldn't be about to.
Correct.
You know, the gas and a little bit of mileage instead of having to pay. You know, we pay the, the firefighters that go to the academy, operate their own personal vehicles, so we just reimburse them mileage, which at this time is.
Which fluctuates. I mean, I budget for it. I budgeted, because currently, Misty had told me it's like right at sixty-five, seventy cents a mile, current IRS rate, so that's what, I figured it off, seventy cents, the miles, how many trips they're going to make, all that. So that's kind of what I, and, and I was spitballing because I didn't know how much a payment would be, but I put capital expenditure in my proposed budget for like twelve-five. FNBC, he did the complete math for me as far as what a payment would be and all that. And they were the ones at five percent. Like I said, with a two-fifty document fee, he based it off sixty thousand, and an annual payment would be thirteen-six, so.
So, and that, I think you answered my question, but we would be able, in this scenario, we would be able to finance the upgrades that your truck would need as well?
Yeah, I would assume so. And not all the upgrades do I have to do immediately.
Sure.
I've got a quote being made up currently for the light bar and whatnot, but the light bar that's on that truck I've installed. I mean, it's not like that can't be done if that's what we need to do to get this deal done. I'm not going to let that hold us up. Monty and I both use a guy in the evening shade as far as the graphics. So he's inexpensive, does good work. So that's really the two biggest things as far as like the light bar and my radio. Like I said, if need be, for whatever reason, I can handle all that stuff. Mostly, it's the truck itself that I'm looking to get funded here. The other stuff, I can squeeze in my budget throughout the next year or whatever I need to do, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Chief, about the monthly or the annual payments?
Through FNBC, I had him figure it on sixty thousand, which is more than my final quote was. And they figured thirteen-six for an annual payment. And he said that was at a five percent interest rate.
And Councilman Thompson in the working meeting asked for interest rate for the savings account, just to try to see where we can get the balance for the money.
Misty looked that up yesterday, three-point-one-five, okay. Yeah.
So it's just a difference of that one-point-nine-something.
Yeah.
Well, I'd make a motion that we take it out of the savings account because I'd rather not have the.
General fund.
General fund, sorry. General fund, I'd rather not have the payments over time.
I would second that.
On what amount?
Your forty, what was?
Forty-eight for the truck itself.
I, um.
You could also use your, not turnback funds, but your funds for equipment to get.
I can use Act Eight Thirty-three for the equipment on the truck. I can't use it to purchase a truck or, because it's not a response vehicle as far as ISO is concerned. But we can't use it to buy like the equipment that would go on it, the radio, all that stuff.
Is this kind of your big ask for next year, this year? I mean, depending on.
Yeah. My proposed budget for next year is less than what my budget was this year.
And if we do this, this takes how much out of next year's budget that you've got?
Um, currently, like twelve-five.
Yeah.
Well, we said we were going to leave fifty-one or fifty-four hundred in.
Yeah, fuel.
Yeah.
Travel.
Yeah, travel, fuel.
So it goes from, instead of his travel budget line item being twelve-five every year.
Right.
It'd be fifty-one hundred or fifty-four hundred.
Yeah, because I'd still have to pay for the meals at the fire academy.
It was about seven thousand, seven thousand.
Just chase, another change.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if we pay it out of savings, we're going to take twelve-five times two out of my budget, so.
Well, so I want to say this. It's obviously, in a perfect world, I absolutely agree with both Councilman Thompson and Councilman Martin. However, I'm just concerned, based on the numbers that we're hearing with the, the budget and making everything work, and hearing that we're deficit, you know, obviously scares me. Cash is king, and my vote is that we actually explore financing the vehicle. The difference in the interest rate that we'd be paying versus what we'd be gaining in the savings is negligible, in my mind. I would just, I'm scared of letting go of our cash. I'm just going to be honest.
Well, you don't have to justify that to me because.
Yeah. Well, right now, I mean, and just to let you know, I mean, we kind of, myself and Misty, that's, you know, we kind of look at the general fund, and it, when it gets built up to a certain amount, you know, because we don't have, used to, they had a set amount that they paid every month into the savings. And they kind of took that out when I, when I became mayor, and me and Misty kind of got to talking. So when it, we kind of put a set amount that when the general fund gets built up to, we just automatically transfer. You know, it's the one savings account. We've got it back up to five-oh-five, and the other savings account's at four-forty-five. So I was just fixing the, I mean, probably by the end of this month, I was going to, I told her by the end of the month, we was going to transfer the fifty-five out to feed it back up to five-hundred. So I mean, it's, I mean, I was going to transfer it into savings anyway. And it took, the last time we transferred, it took four, about four months for it to build back up, so.
Well, I, I just don't know, I mean, obviously, case by case, we could explore it, but five percent seems very fair. And I'm worried that on other big capital expenses that other departments may bring in front of us next year, that we may not be able to take advantage of as good of an interest rate. And while I absolutely hate the idea of financing anything, I just want to say again, I'm worried about our cash, and I would love to keep our cash and save it for the things that we don't have the option of a five percent interest rate to take advantage of.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
And just for clarification, we got nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the savings. And this is not even touching the savings. We've got about nine-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand in general fund.
But we have a lot of departments that are, that are going to be asking for things and.
Yeah, there's some big ask coming up this year. That's.
Again, it's not, it's not necessarily about the, this one-off situation. Absolutely, Mayor, I agree a hundred percent. Let's write the check and be done. But if we don't know what's going to be asked in the future, we have to be, we have to be very mindful of what we have right now. We can't forecast what we could get. We can't forecast what we could get terms on later down the road. We have to focus on what we're getting right now. And right now, the juice is not worth the squeeze to me.
I call for the question.
All righty. Mr. Martin made a motion to purchase the, to spend forty, did you say you want to send to the act of mine, or you want to say forty-nine thousand?
Forty-nine is fine.
Does use forty-nine thousand out of the general fund account to buy a new pickup truck for the fire department, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Voice vote, please.
Mayor, before we vote, I'd kind of like to know what they're talking about.
Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson.
Is that, is there information we can use?
I was asking him if he did the math real quick on us making the three-point-one-five on interest versus the five percent finance charge. And the thing, what we were discussing is that the five percent's going to stick, and the three-point-one-five that we're getting on our interest rate could be ticking downward, which is a bigger gap.
So a year ago, CD rates, banks nationwide were running above five percent, five and a quarter, five to five-fifty. Those interest rates across the country now are at three-eighty-five. So the rates that we're going to receive on savings is trending down. We're in a downward trend right now. But we're going to lock in at five. So even though you're only a one-point-eight-five percent difference today, that doesn't look like that's going to hold, you know, at that favorable a difference. I think that gap, that difference is probably going to trend to be wider over the next year or two. That's my only concern. If the trend is downward like that, then the possibility is that if we do have another vehicle that we do have to finance, it may be at a lower-than-five-percent rate, if that's where the general trend is going. But I think you're locking in at a five and saying the only difference is one-point-eight-five percent, and I think that trend will probably widen. So I think that's why I seconded Mr. Martin's motion, because I think at this point, it's prudent to go with the pain for the vehicle and then possibly consider your point later on another piece of equipment if we need it, that those rates could be lower at that point. And they could go either direction. I'm just saying where the trend is right now.
Well, and then, you know, again, I definitely don't want to beat the dead horse, and you are the financial guru. So I definitely take anything you say very seriously and appreciate your candidness. I just say, at that point, we could, the cash is still there. We could pay off this truck, and if we are able to finance at a more favorable rate that makes sense, we take that finance option so that we're not continuing to finance things, but literally making our cash totally work for us every single day, and.
I might also add a note, and I don't know if you caught it at the working meeting, Pam, but I know the mayor touched on it during the working meeting, is a lot of those capital expenditures for the street department, I believe, are going to be coming out of their turnback money, which doesn't affect.
Has no effect to the general.
The budget itself.
It's their own, it's their own bank.
Because that can only be spent on that, similar to my Act Eight Thirty-three, it can only be spent on certain things.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, it comes out of a different money. Voice vote, please, on purchasing, spending forty-nine thousand out of the general fund to purchase the new truck for the fire department, just to remind everybody.
Ishmael.
She seemed like she had a question.
I had a question.
I thought, no, I thought Rachel had a question.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Rowland.
Can you skip me and come back? I'm still thinking. Um, yes.
Harrison.
I'm going to say yes. Say yes.
Rachel Tatum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Low.
No.
Five to one, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I do have something.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of your council received your business cards. The ones that did not, I did not receive yours back so that I could make corrections.
I didn't mention anything about the emails. I'm sorry.
And I hope your emails are set up. Pam had called me with a question today, and I got into hers, and I bet there's about twenty-five emails in there, so.
And I'm still having problems. I don't know why it keeps giving me errors. It says, it's, and I'll have to look at, it's got a very specific name that goes either back to the state, or it goes back to the city, and it says to contact the IT person. I'm going to keep trying to work with it, but it is not working on my end. I don't know why.
Okay. If you're going to be home tomorrow, maybe I'll stop by and see what I can do.
Okay.
Because I did notice that there were some emails in there that probably need to be answered.
Okay.
Just a reminder there, because I've switched everything that I can switch so that we know where they're at. And then also make sure you look on the Facebook page. I need contact information and bios and pictures, and that page will be done.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on, just a second. I have a question. Shocker. Where are we with planning and zoning, starting to look at ordinances to match the new law for the alternate home, tiny home law that was passed? Because we talked about it at the last meeting, and it was, we were going to get with planning and zoning and start looking at us talking about those ordinances, because like you're supposed to be in compliance by January. And right now, we've got a freeze on no permits for under.
A thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Who does?
We do.
You guys voted on it.
Yep. So, but I haven't heard anything, so.
I guess I need some clarification, because it was a thousand, all buildings under a thousand square feet?
Residential.
No matter what? Because the ADUs only have to do with auxiliary dwelling units. And if you read the law, the law says you have to have a single-family dwelling unit before you can even build an ADU. But you put, but the city council voted in a voice vote to put a hold on all building permits in Cherokee.
Yes, because we ended up with a Morgan Building getting a building permit.
Yep.
And the Santa Fe addition, which the Santa Fe addition has no restrictions on square footage if you go by the bills of assurance.
Well, but the permit notice that was posted on the set, said shed. It didn't say home, tiny home, anything.
And the Santa Fe addition has historically been a mobile home park for alternative housing. And, and the Santa Fe addition has historically been a mobile home park for alternative housing.
Right, but not sheds.
Some, some people call it a house, it's not up to me to determine what people call an alternative house.
Well, again, I, we could go back and forth, I, I just wanted to take this opportunity for the state, the state mandate that we have to allow ADUs, as a chance for us to look at, at a, a little, a broader spectrum on alternative housing, because I do feel like it's beneficial, but I also feel like we all need to be singing out of the same hymn book, and we don't need one or two one-offs making decisions in the heat of the moment to approve things when the citizens don't know that that could also apply to them, or not apply to them. I don't feel like that was, I don't feel like that was a.
Well, and there were some questions about septic, because this, this allows for, you know, a single-family home to put, uh, um, like a tiny home or whatnot, on the same property, but if your, if your septic is only a certain size, it's not gonna flow, so to speak, with that tiny home. And, um, there was also, I know, um, Steve and I had both mentioned about, um, you know, how they're secured down, and what's the process for that, so, I mean, we, we've gotta play a little bit of catch-up, uh, for, to make sure we've got ordinance in, in place that, but yet, we're still in compliance with the state.
You gotta be in compliance with the state, because otherwise we'll be opening ourselves up to lawsuits.
So, is this something that the planning and zoning is working on, or is it something that we, we need to work on?
They hadn't had enough members really to talk much, but you, you got two of them around here now.
Their last meeting with Angela was going to go for a meeting like, a week or two later.
She was gonna go to a meeting.
To get more information.
Where was that meeting?
The first meeting.
Where was that meeting?
I have no idea.
The meeting was in Jonesville.
Okay, so did she go?
Yes.
Okay.
For Charlie.
Okay. So, then where, where with this?
I would like for it to be a collaborative effort to save time, 'cause typically, we would wait for planning and zoning to present ordinances to us for approval, but being that timing is of the essence, I would like for it to be more of a collaborative effort between planning and zoning and city council, just to kinda work it out in one, one swoop, and then have city council vote on it.
You know you can create any ordinance you want and present it to us without having to go through them, 'cause you seem to have something in mind, and that doesn't negate you being able to do that. So, if you've got something in mind, we got a lawyer over there, get with him, present it, 'cause maybe he doesn't have to go through planning and zoning. You're a realtor, he got other realtors that might be able to help you with that, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, based on your earlier, um, conversation about your concerns for planning and zoning, I want for there to be complete transparency, and I want for it to be a collaborative effort.
Oh, you can collaborate with them.
Yes, and I mean, 'cause I know that I can do that, but I would much rather have the people that are gonna be enforcing it, and to be, we all, we all learn the same thing at the same time, is, that's, that's just how I see it. Um, and then go from there, but if that's, if that's what, if that's what y'all would like for me to do, I am happy to do that.
I would, I would strongly suggest you do, 'cause at least it'll get done.
Okay.
You have a special meeting, you can go meet this summer.
See what I mean?
When is the next P and Z meeting?
January.
January.
No way.
Yeah.
We should have one in December.
I think y'all should make that happen.
January fifth will be the next one.
So, you're, you're gonna run the football, you're the guy?
I guess so.
Okay.
You can come up here and get on the speaker.
Please let me know.
Get up on the speaker.
Not next Thursday, not before. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
My name is Tim Sample, I've lived in this village for forty-three years. Forty of them years I've stayed in Santa Fe addition. Okay, recently, I went to the code office, because there was a gentleman that wanted to put an RV on an empty lot out there. Okay, the code people told me absolutely not, which I understand that. Okay, now, these same people are living in a twelve-by-twenty old shed, barn-type shed. And the code people said as long as it has a bathroom, a bedroom, and a kitchen, that they can do that. But it had to be forty foot long. These people have been living in this shed for a month. And I mean, you know, what's Santa Fe gonna come to if we start letting people live in sheds? It's bad enough out there now, and I'm sure y'all realize that. I mean, it's just gonna go downhill if we allow this type of living to happen. I have no problems with tiny homes, they're beautiful. They can come in, take the wheels off, put them on blocks, underpin them, that'd be fine with me. Even an RV at forty foot long, if it's nice, underpin it, it'd be great. But we cannot have these people living in these sheds out there. You're gonna have every crackhead in the county trying to get a shed to live in, out there. And we got enough problems out there now, and it's just gonna go downhill. And property value, what's that gonna do to my home? I had my place appraised last year for just under two hundred thousand dollars, that's a mobile home. What's that gonna do to my property value if we let this happen out there? So, I mean, y'all need to discuss this or, or something, we gotta stop this, we just can't have it. I appreciate y'all's time, and I hate to be griping at you, but I got nobody else to gripe to. You know, I've been to the code office, and they're like, well, we rezoned it. I was never made aware that they rezoned it at all. And according to law, I believe, they have to let us know, the property owners that are involved in the rezoning, what is gonna take place, then there has to be a city council meeting on it, and then it gets discussed, and it gets approved, or whatever. But I mean, right now, you can look at my place, and right across the street, I got people living in a shed. I mean, we gotta draw a line somewhere. I mean, you know, I don't know what else to do except come down here and talk to y'all. I mean, I love this village, I've just lived here a long time, and I've just seen it, where I live, it's gonna get bad, in a hurry. So, I thank y'all for your time, and.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, can we not re- request, since we now have a full quorum on P and Z, that they call an emergency meeting to address this issue? I mean, the fact that you're wa, you're not gonna have a planned meeting until January.
Yeah.
I think is, under the circumstances, I think we have special circumstances here. Ms. Roland and I were talking about the concerns, you know, this gentleman just mentioned, you know, the underpinning of the tiny home, and the underpinning of an RV. To my knowledge, I don't know how you would underpin a twelve-by-twenty shed. Um, you know, I just, you know, there, I just don't think that that's even a possibility. And so, um, I think the questions have been raised about whether or not Santa Fe has been, was indeed rezoned, whether or not this twelve-by-twenty shed really does comply with both the, the letter and the intent of the law that was passed by, uh, the legislature. And so, I think that it warrants a special meeting to be called, a P and Z, to address this, and to see whether or not, whatever basis that permit was issued, whether or not indeed it should be revoked, because, you know, it's, I can understand the gentleman's concerns, but there was, we raised concerns at the last, in previous council meetings about what was going on, and whether or not that was really the intent of what the legislature did, uh, with this, and whether or not, and I think what's been raised this evening is whether or not we really did in fact rezone, 'cause I don't recall.
I don't recall, no.
I don't recall that ever being brought up before council.
I don't either.
As far as rezoning. And so, I would, I would entertain, I would request a motion tonight to have the duly appoint, newly appointed members of P and Z, and the existing members of P and Z, that over the, within the next two to three weeks maximum, that they convene a meeting and address this issue specifically. That would be my motion.
I would second that.
I've been with you in the last five years, and we have never talked about rezoning. It doesn't matter.
Yep.
Well, even, even if that, even if, even if there were more lax zoning, it's not an anything goes, every man for himself, if you can live in it, you can stay in it type situation. And all I was trying to do at the last meeting, by putting in the halt of anything under a thousand square feet, was just to.
Just to not let this happen, yeah.
Just to give us a chance to take it all in, and figure out the best way to write it all out and move forward, where we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I would like to know how the permit got issued and how it happened, so.
I make a motion that we, um.
There's already a motion.
He already made the motion, I second it.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Roland.
Seconded by who?
Ms. Roland. To, um, compel planning and zoning to have an emergency.
Steve, huh?
We can't compel anyone to have an emergency.
Okay, okay, request planning and zoning to have a emergency meeting to address the issue at hand. I don't know, two, it's two different issues, ADUs and the other thing, it's two different issues, but. Voice vote, please.
Roland, yes. Harrison.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Lo.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Am I allowed to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passed.
You're on planning and zoning now.
Well, I didn't know the rules.
And then also, we gotta figure out how we.
I'm new.
Okay, now I need a second clarification. So, Eddie's on planning and zoning, and Mr. Phelps, as of tonight?
Correct.
Okay, see, I did not realize that down here, because we posted, I thought we were putting Mr. Phelps on, I did, but I thought we were rescinding yours for now, because we put out that we were taking resumes and applications for. Okay, so then that'll be updated, I guess, tomorrow, that we're not taking.
No, you can still take them.
There might be a third one coming open.
Oh, there might be a third coming open?
Y'all, sorry, we're just hungry, I guess.
Yeah, so we have to go back, every year, there's supposed to be a new person appointed.
No problem, just wanted some clarification, y'all making me dizzy down here, I got it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There we go, motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Ishmael to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
So, the elected people do not get to.